Anyone willing, anyone else rather, want to sign up to speak? All right. Now I'll call to order this city council meeting, November sixth, twenty twenty-three, City of Oak Hill. The clerk will now call the roll.
Mayor Charles Briscoe.
Here.
Councilor Large Bill Hannabass.
Here.
Ward one, council members Diane Janey.
Here.
Roger Evans.
Here.
Krista Hodges. Ward two, council members Chris Gill.
Here.
PJ Elder.
Here.
And Charles Smallwood Junior.
Here.
Thank you. We will now have our invocation by Councilman Chris Gill, followed by our Pledge of Allegiance led by Chief Timothy Richmond.
This all bow our heads. Lord, first of all, I want to thank you for your grace and mercy that you show us every day. I thank you for the opportunity to serve you, but mostly I thank you for the plan of salvation that you offered everyone. Lord, I thank you for this governing body that you have assembled. I thank you for allowing us to represent this great city of Oak Hill. And as we gather here tonight to conduct the business of the city, I first want to pray for unity. Because your word says that every city or every house divided against itself shall not stand. Tonight, God, I pray for wisdom, since it was a council, a governing body, that because of political motives and personal agendas that caused you to be put to death on the cross, I ask that you help this council put aside all political motives and agendas, and grant us the wisdom to make the right decisions for the city and the citizens. But most of all, Lord, in a way that would be pleasing to you. God, I ask that you daily place a hedge of protection around all of us here tonight, and all of our city employees who go out each day to make this city a better place for all of us to live, in Jesus's name, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, the liberty and justice of.
Tonight, we have something very, very special. We have a young lady with us that's one hundred and one years old. I'm going to warn you, I'm going to hug you. Because just yesterday, my grandma turned a hundred and one, so I'm going to be the only guy in this state of West Virginia that hugged two one hundred and one year olds in two days. If you don't mind, I'm going to get the hug first. I'm going to stand over here, so. A proclamation from the mayor of Oak Hill, West Virginia, that would be me, this is for you. Whereas on October twenty-first, nineteen twenty-two, a child was born to Elise Mae Holzhouser and George Victor Newell of Canada. That child being Dorothy M. Newell, the second child of four. Dorothy received her United States citizenship papers at the tender age of eight months. Whereas Dorothy's father passing away when she was fifteen-year-old, fifteen years old, Dorothy dropped out of school to work at Jim Dandy's Ice Cream Parlor to help support her siblings. Her mother began to take in boarders to help with the expenses of being a widow, and it was during this time as a warder that she met her future husband, Willard Lake. She fell in love with Willard's wit and his ability to make. Whereas Willard and Dorothy married at her home in Lincoln Park, Michigan, on August second, nineteen forty. After twenty years of marriage, Willard passed away, leaving Dorothy boys for children. He began to work as a cook for Taylor School District in Taylor, Michigan, while still being at home for her children when they needed her. Dorothy remembers the depression and has always watched what she spent, even when she didn't have to. I can't do it. Whereas Dorothy retired in nineteen eighty-five, she was a very active person in her condominium community of Murray Hills, Lake Worth, Florida. She square danced, played bridge, and peanoke. She was treasurer of her bowling league and went to water aerobics. She gave New Year's Eve parties, baked lemon pies, and her potato salad was requested for covered dish events. It's my kind of girl. Whereas after purchasing a home in Oak Hill, West Virginia, closer to her daughter Vicki, she was introduced to bridge games with Vicki's clients and attended the study club. For her ninety-third birthday, Dorothy celebrated with a pajama party with these ladies, all of which ranged from age eighty to ninety-three years old. Dorothy celebrated her one-hundredth birthday at Three Gables with relatives from Canada and several other states. She gave a very moving speech and even told a few jokes. Her hundred-first birthday was a bit quieter with a luncheon with family and friends held at Fed Continuous Care where she now is at. Now therefore, in commemoration of the one hundred and one years of a rich and productive life of our honoree, I, Charles H. Briscoe, Mayor of the City of Oak Hill, declare the twenty-first day of October Dorothy M. Lake Day in the confines of the City of Oak Hill. In witness thereof, I have set unto my hand and fixed this signature the sixth day of November, two thousand twenty-three, in the City of Oak Hill County of Fayette in the great state of West Virginia. All right, folks, let's now move along to our reading and approval of the minutes. All right, if we can just go ahead, we're going to accept the minutes. If we can get a motion to accept, we'll go ahead and do that.
I'll make a motion, we accept. The minutes from the October meeting.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion's been properly moved and seconded. The minutes from the October meeting be accepted. All those in favor?
Ah.
Any other questions on this motion? All those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you, folks. We'll need the same on the treasurer's report. Can we get a motion for that? Accept.
I move to approve the treasurer's report.
We get a second?
I'll second.
Any questions? Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Treasurer's report will be accepted. All those in favor?
Ah.
All those opposed? Correspondents?
We don't have any.
No correspondents, all right. So we have one person signed up to speak. That would be Ms. Wood, Sue Wood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Hello? Do you have to start a timer or am I good to go? Right. My name is Sue Wood, and I work with the Fayette Prevention Coalition and their Drug-Free Communities Grant. I am here to request to ask with this, to ask to work with the city council to draft an ordinance regarding vape shops, smoke shops, and retailers that sell those products. Our goal at the Fayette Prevention Coalition is to reduce youth access to tobacco products and marketing. There's a couple of different policy objectives that we could potentially meet here in Oak Hill. One could be to limit the number of vape shops based on the population. Two could be to set a minimum distance of vape shops from schools and youth-serving areas such as community centers. And three, to set a minimum distance of vape and smoke shops from other tobacco retailers. The density of a tobacco retailer is associated with the smoking prevalence in that area. Fayette County is poised for economic growth, especially considering our new national park designation. We need to focus on growing in a healthy direction, both economically and in regards to the physical well-being of our young people. We know that what kids see every day becomes normal to them. In February, a vape shop opened within walking distance of an elementary school and community center here in Fayette County. Three new vape shops have opened in Fayette County in less than one year. These shops offer a lot more than tobacco and nicotine products, and we know most addiction begins in the teen years, and we need to provide clear boundaries for the protection of our kids. I have a little bit more background here. There is, what set this off back in February was I received a phone call from someone at the sheriff's department, who spoke with a very upset parent because their child was able to come into possession of three hundred dollars' worth of vaping paraphernalia. Because of that, we went into the, at the time, there was only six vape shops in Fayette County, and two out of the six of those shops did sell to our underage youth inspector. Not long after that, a vape shop opened that was within walking distance of an elementary school. What I'm asking for is to put protections in place so that things like that don't happen here in Oak Hill. So we would like to set a limit, a minimum distance, that vape shops can be from your schools and youth-serving areas, so that the kids aren't exposed to those, that marketing every day. We also want to look at retail density. If you guys have been on vacation, maybe to someplace like Myrtle Beach, you may see like three vape shops in one strip mall. Fayette County is becoming more of a tourist destination, and we don't want that to happen here. Those are some of the things we'd like to work with you on. I'd also like to point out that the Fayette County Commission did pass a policy vape shop ordinance, and they set the distance at one mile.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Wood.
I also have a proposed ordinance that I'll send out to everyone tomorrow, that, that they would like for you all to look at and ask questions if you have questions. We don't have anything in place right now, do we?
Any other questions from Ms. Wood from council? All right. Moving along to unfinished business. Number one is the consideration to appoint members of boards, commissions, and committees. We'll start with the amphitheater committee, Jacqueline Gill, Deborah Davis, then the planning commission, and then the building commission, which would be Don Williams.
We had two people resign from the amphitheater committee. So we haven't, two vacancies. I have talked with both of these people, and they are willing to serve on this committee. However, that is up to you, if there's someone else.
Who resigned?
Mike Lively and Kathleen Lively. Sue, do you need a motion for that? If you want to, yeah, if you desire to appoint these two. Mayor, you agree with that?
I'm fine with it.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we accept Jacqueline Gill and Deborah Davis to be on the amphitheater committee.
I'll second that.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Any questions? We'll vote. All those in favor?
Ah.
All those opposed? Motion is carried. Next would be the planning commission.
We still have not appointed anyone on that commission. I did speak with Don Williams, and he said he would, but, he doesn't, no, it's, he was just mediocre about it. He is, I'm going to ask you to definitely appoint him to the building commission, so if you only would like for him to be on one. If anybody has any suggestions for the planning commission. I have not talked to anyone about that, about being on that. Is there already people on that? There are people on it now that, they're going to have a meeting tomorrow night, actually, and so I think they do have a forum for that tomorrow night. So. Table this till December.
Mm-hmm. We get a motion to table this?
I'll make a motion to table this to December meeting.
We get a second?
I'll second the motion.
Motion's been properly moved, seconded to table the planning commission appointments. Any question on the motion? All those in favor?
Ah.
All those opposed? Thank you. Move along to number three, which would be the building commission and the appointment of Don Williams.
And that's, we only have the one position left on there, and Don said he would be willing to stay on the building commission. He is a signer on the bank account.
Demeter, do you have it in front of you, the other members of the, uh, building commission?
Yes, Valerie has it.
If you just read them.
Matt Wender, Steve Moss, Jim Ross, Kay Ballard.
Oh, that's the planning.
That's planning.
Oh.
The building.
Sorry. Bill Laird, Mary Lynn Plant, David Stewart, and Wes McDonald.
Thank you.
See, you need a motion for that?
We will need a motion. Let y'all think about it.
All right, well, I'll make a motion that we accept Don Williams on the building commission.
We get a second? Anyone? Hmm, not many.
Okay, I will bring another name to you.
Okay.
Or if y'all know anyone that would be interested in that. As you're out, think of the people you were talking to when you were running and see if any of those will volunteer for some of these commissions.
So can we get a motion to table that as well?
Yes, I motion, babe.
We get a second?
I'll second.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded that we table the building commission appointment of Don Williams. Any other questions?
No, it'll be, he was not, so it'll be the table of just that.
Just to table that appointment, yes. All right. All those in favor?
Ah.
All those opposed? Number two, request to abandon right-of-way on State Street. This is the second reading.
And this is the one we discussed last month about the abandonment. And Tyler has highlighted the, the property that we're asking to be abandoned.
My move, we accept this as the second reading. And I second it.
Do, are you just waiting on the vote?
Pretty much. The, no one wants it. Everybody has, gave me letters stating that they don't want it. So if you guys turn it over to me, and if it's in the record just right, I don't have to get a type feed. But if it comes down to that, that's what I'll have to do. Is what the cap room says.
What we will do is give you a copy of our minutes once we have them completed, and we also have that resolution that they did last month, so I can give you those two things.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd probably hang on to those letters.
Yes, ma'am. I've made copies and everything.
All right, can we get a motion?
Move that we accepted it as the second reading.
I second. Roger seconded.
Oh, thank you, Roger. I didn't even hear you. All right, motion's been properly moved and seconded to request the, request to abandon right-of-way on State Street. All those in favor?
Ah.
All those opposed? Thank you. Number three, the consideration to amend Oak Hill Municipal Code.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Zoning enforcement officer, this is the second reading of that one.
This is just to change the wording in there, in the ordinance that says council appoints the zoning officers, or the zoning officer, that will now read the city manager appoints the zoning officer, and then that puts it in line, puts this ordinance in line with the charter.
Can we get a motion on that, folks?
I move that this constitute the second reading of the, Amendment fifteen point oh-six point oh-two-oh regarding the zoning officer, zoning enforcement officer.
We get a second?
I'll second that.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded to consider, the consideration to amend the Oak Hill Municipal Code, excuse me. All those in favor?
Ah.
All those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Number four, consideration to amend Oak Hill Municipal Code. You know what? Let's take them off. That might help. Meeting procedure time change. This is the second reading. So we're going to be moving the meeting to six o'clock.
Right, this will allow the meeting to now start at six o'clock.
Can we get a motion to do that?
I motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion's been properly moved and seconded to change the meeting time to six PM. All those in favor?
Ah.
All those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you.
Miss, will this begin next month?
It will start in December.
Want to put that out to let everyone on the website, the page, and all, let people know.
Yeah, we will.
Moving on, some new business now. Consideration to appoint Valerie Vaughn as our new city clerk slash treasurer.
This is, as, as you all know, Rhonda resigned a couple weeks ago, I think, and I'm just asking that you make Valerie the clerk as well as the treasurer. I'd like to make that motion to appoint Valerie as our city clerk slash treasurer.
I'll second that.
Motion has been properly moved and seconded to appoint Valerie Vaughn as city clerk slash treasurer. All those in, you have a question?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
The charter calls for separate jobs.
Yes.
Two different positions.
But doesn't it say that someone, does it say it has to be two different positions? Because I know it says you can appoint the city manager as clerk. But does it say it has to be two different people?
No, it doesn't say two different people. But I don't think the same person ought to have both of those jobs.
That's the way it was for several, several decades.
Well, that might be true too, but the charter, even city manager, in the meeting of November seventh, twenty twenty-two, you indicated that we would separate those two positions anyway.
Well, that, yes, that was because the mayor asked for that. The mayor had asked for that to be done at that time. Does it, does it say that, doesn't it say the person can be the city manager?
It could be.
In that?
Yeah.
That's what it reads. I thought it just said that they appoint, that they appoint a city clerk. That council appoints a city clerk.
Can we pull that up?
Can we pull that up?
Can you get to?
Is under?
It's in the charter. There's a city clerk.
Administrative offices and departments, maybe? No, the city clerk.
It's right there. That's it.
Thirteen.
I don't, I don't think that it says it has to be
Separate.
Separate.
Are we changing the charter?
No, I'm just saying that it says the council shall appoint an officer of the city who shall have the title of city clerk. So it would be, she could be city clerk and city treasurer.
It doesn't say it can be. It doesn't say, it doesn't prohibit it, I don't think. And I don't think it says yea or nay either way.
We see what it says under city treasurer.
I don't see where it prevents it myself. That's just my opinion.
It worked well for years. Having the same person.
Wasn't that what you were?
For twenty-five years and then uh, Virginia was before that. Do you have an opinion, Mr. Vaughn?
I believe this is very good, same situation, so both positions, weighted bit. Had they excluded one, then that, that would have been, maybe. It's not unusual to put the term city manager, or the city manager over city building, um, state, but that's good. I think, I, I think it's legally, it's good.
I'll stand with my original motion.
Can we get a second?
I seconded it. And I'll stand with it.
Alright, any other questions on the motion? Alright, this has been properly moved and seconded. Who appoint Valerie Vaughn as city clerk slash treasurer? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Alright, the eyes have it. Number six, presentation and request from New River Transit Authority to increase assessment.
Hi, um, I'm Heather Lilly. I'm the assistant director at New River Transit. This is Erica. She's our new mobility coordinator. She's passing around some um, support documents to go with what I have to say. Um, New River Transit was established in two thousand fifteen upon becoming urbanized. Um, once we become fifty thousand or more, it became a transit system that is federally funded directly from Federal Transit Administration. So we are ran by federal funds, but for every dollar that we draw down that's federal, we must have a local support to go with that. And so, um, prior to COVID, we had toll credits from the state. Well, once COVID came, they said that we couldn't have them anymore, which wasn't a big deal because of COVID money. But we've recently went back and asked them to reconsider, and they said that as long as it's under the current administration, that public transit would not receive toll credits any longer, that it's all going towards highways. So we decided to come to all our municipalities and counties and request for the consideration of an increase in the annual membership and assessment that's given. Um, I have provided some charts. In April of two thousand twenty-one, we expanded. So the small brochures that you guys have in your packet are our old services where we had three routes. And in April of two thousand twenty-one, we expanded to five routes, and our times are now from eight A M. to eight P M. Seven forty-five in the morning to about eight P M. We also offer demand response services. Your charts, the very first one is actually the blue route that comes through Fayette County and then to Oak Hill. Used to, we would do two full trips, and since the, um, route expansion, we now do four. Um, we have seen a increase in fuel over time by over a dollar. Our buses, in two thousand nineteen, we ordered two new buses, which were actually larger buses because the blue route was hitting expansion or beyond limits, so we had to get a bigger bus for this area to ensure we were covering everyone. And that bus was seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Last year, when we ordered four new buses, it was a hundred and twenty-six thousand, twenty-nine dollars. It was nearly sixty percent increase. Um, but if you look in the very last chart, that is our operating expenses over the last three years, and it just continues to increase. Um, but we're evolving in technology. We're continuing to do everything that our other systems are doing. Um, we have Passio that's getting ready to come, um, live where a passenger can be somewhere and see where the closest bus is, and it will show them how to get to where they need to go. Um, we have transfers at the Crossroads Mall, so anybody in Fayette County can get into Beckley and do anything they need to. They could go all the way to Sophia Beaver. Um, and we also have a program that's near and dear to my heart. It's called the SOR program, State Opioid Response. And anyone who's in recovery of any kind will get a free transit pass and can also schedule um, trips. Used to, it was just for recovery and treatment, but now it's for the whole recovery process. So doctor's appointments, groceries, visiting mama, anything they need to do. Um, and that's been great, and that's also one of the ridership charts that has been provided in the packet. Um, currently, seven thousand, ten dollars is how much is paid a year. And, um, we're just asking for consideration to increase. We have went to the city of Beckley and Fayetteville and Raleigh County. We will be going to Sophia, Mount Hope, and, um, Fayette County Commission. But as of right now, Beckley's the only one that's approved it, and they doubled it. They went from thirty, thirty-eight five to seventy-seven thousand a year. So any local support is greatly appreciated because that's how keeps the buses running.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Val.
Heather, is this something that we can hold off until our budget hearing in March? Right. There's a lot of people that use that.
So I, I have a question also. Can you, I don't know much about the routes, so can you go from one place in Oak Hill to another? So can someone be picked up around here and maybe go to Kroger or that?
Where along the route, they can pull a port and the driver will stop, just like in the back of the street where there is, uh, we'll pick them up. Um, there's several locations in Oak Hill that does so, but they can also follow ahead to the dispatcher, schedule a deviation, and anywhere along the route, that's three quarters of a mile. No more than three quarters. Um, they will go, but it's not be scheduled ahead just to make sure we don't, um, get away.
Okay, that's good information because a lot of people just need something right around here.
I have a lot of customers that take advantage of that. I work at Chase Bank. That, that bus is in front of our bank every day, so I appreciate the service. You have great drivers too. They're, yeah, yeah, very nice.
Unrelated to Oak Hill, um, I work for Dave Port, Raleigh County. Thank you. You've made my job a little easier, so appreciate it. I appreciate it, I really do.
Thank you.
I will just do that. At, does any, do you all want to do something now, or do you just want to wait until we do our budget hearings in March?
We just, I, I think they're expecting it no sooner than two weeks.
Right.
That would be.
Okay.
Alright, moving to number seven, consideration to approve an extension to the agreement with Triad Engineering concerning the sanitary.
This is an agreement, um, that happened when we took over Arbuckle, the Arbuckle sewer system, and we purchased some or Triad agreed to give us some documents that we would need for the project that we're about, um, that we're getting ready to start in Mendon and their collection system. Um, so this is just, we haven't gotten to the point where we're getting our money from that project yet, and our bonds are not, have not been issued. So this will extend this agreement with Triad until the end of I think it's twenty-four. It goes out another year. So that, I think this is the second time maybe that we have done that. Twenty-four. So when we close on that project, we will, we owe Triad money for their design that they had worked on.
I move to, uh, extend the agreement until after the closing on the project.
Can we get a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Any question on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is carried. Item number eight, consideration to adopt the resolution authorizing an application for the Hazard Mitigation Program and authorize a request for proposals and an appraiser for the program.
Leslie Taylor is on Zoom with us from Region Four Development Council, so I'll let her explain this.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
On October twenty-sixth, we held a public meeting in the council chambers to explore the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. We had representatives from West Virginia Emergency Management Division, as well as interested uh, residents in the area to discuss the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. The application deadline for interested parties to turn in applications is November ninth, and to date, we have received seven applications from inter, interested individuals. So in this program, FEMA can pay up to seventy-five percent of the approved project's cost. And the state has traditionally provided the twenty-five percent non-federal share, but that's always dependent on the state budget. So we don't know if they will be providing that twenty-five percent. If the state does not provide that twenty-five percent, then the city would be responsible. And this is a, a buyout program. Uh, this is the preferred method for structures in the floodway portion of the floodplain. This is a voluntary program on the part of the local government and the property owner. And the, the property, how it works basically is the property owner gives you, um, in exchange for fair market value of the property, the property owner gives you the property, the community gets the title and then clears the land, and then the property must remain open space forever. So the purpose of the resolution, it is, is required by emergency management and by FEMA. If a community is going to file an application, then they must agree to do so in the form of a resolution. And I believe you have that there in front of you, don't you, Domena?
It's, yes, we have it in our documents.
So that's the purpose of that resolution. And along with that, there are a couple of compliance letters that basically state that the city is in compliance with state and federal laws regarding, um, fair housing, that there's no discrimination, um, that to the best of the city's knowledge, um, these properties, uh, there will not be a disproportionately higher adverse effect on human health or economic conditions to minority or low-income populations as a result of participation in the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program.
Leslie, does, does anyone have an estimate? A guesstimate estimate of uh, worst case or best case, whatever the side of the coin you're on, as far as what this may cost the city if the state of West Virginia decides not to uh, fund the twenty percent, which they historically have in the past?
Unfortunately, until an appraiser, appraisal is done on these properties, the properties of interested parties, there's no way of knowing that information.
And they can drop out at any time, so that's another
Right.
That they can drop out. I thought the meeting was well-attended and the people did seem interested.
Right.
But as far, I don't know if they all qualify. I don't know if that, that gets, that's part of the process too. Is that correct, Leslie? They have to look at the application and make sure they qualify for the program.
That's correct.
So to help these folks move forward with this process, if I understand, we will have to accept this resolution or hire a, uh, appraiser to start working with that and and if the state doesn't kick in, all in, I'm trying to wrap it up in a nutshell here in my mind, then we're gonna, we'll do it right.
Right, we would have to do it. Or try to get, is, ma, maybe try to get some other kind of grant for that, our match? Is that possible also?
I don't know that there are any other grants other than from the state of West Virginia, uh, through the governor's office for the buyout. It would also, it would always have to be a non-federal because the federal share, the seventy-five percent federal share from FEMA cannot be matched with other federal dollars.
So for the people that are down there that are wanting, they, they want to do this. They want to accept, they want to work, you know, and get this done. This is pretty much their only chance, right?
Correct.
I, I feel.
That's correct. At this point in time, yes. There may be other opportunities in the future, and simply completing an application and turning it in doesn't guarantee that the application will be successful. Um, this program, like many other grant programs, has a limited amount of dollars, and they always receive more applications than they have funding.
Could you explain fair market value?
I'm sorry?
I said, could you explain fair market value?
Fair market value would be determined by an appraiser, and it would be based on, it just, um, just if you were, like, if you were going to sell your, your home, uh, the appraiser comes out and looks at a value. It's a certified appraiser that's licensed by the state of West Virginia, and they come in and they, they basically look at your square footage and your surroundings, um, and houses that have sold, comparable houses that have sold in the recent um, time period. Some of them can be up to a year. I was looking at one yesterday in another community and And, and one of the properties on the appraiser, appraisers report was almost a year, had sold almost a year ago.
Do we have, Domenita, do we have an appraiser that works for the city or one that we use? Are we just going, we just pick one out? Or how does that?
We actually have to do a request for proposals and, and just get proposals from certified appraisers.
Gotcha.
And Leslie, all the, all the other similar projects, like I, I remember the one in Mount Hope from some years past. All those projects, even though the state kicked in at that time, they still had to approve a resolution similar to this?
So the, the program that you were talking about in Mount Hope or the Killseye, the area, that wasn't a FEMA project. That was NRCS through USDA.
Okay, then let me rephrase that. Other, other projects just like this around Fair County and the state, they've had to pass this resolution to move forward?
That's correct. We, we have some other projects of similar to this same program that we're submitting applications for. And they've all had to sign the resolution as well as the compliance letters.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, there, if no one else has any questions, if it's their only chance of getting it, I, I'd like to move to adopt a resolution authorizing an application for the Hazard Mitigation Program and to move forward with this. If no one else has any questions or comments about it.
Can we get a second?
Seconded that motion.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded to consideration to adopt the resolution authorizing an application for the Hazard Mitigation Program and authorize a request for proposals for an appraiser for the program. Any further questions on this motion? All right, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you, Leslie.
Thank you.
The other thing that I would add is that we do need to make a motion if, if the city is interested in going forward, which I understand that you are based on accepting the resolution. You also should make a motion to solicit for an appraiser for the program.
I move that we solicit for the, for an appraiser for the program and move forward with the program.
Can we get a second?
I'll second that.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving to number nine, consideration to authorize a request for proposals for public entity insurance coverage.
Our insurance coverage expires in April. So now is the time to start looking for other insurance carriers and to see what kind of pricing we can get. We, the Municipal League has a program with the West Virginia Risk School that has been very well received by other municipalities throughout the state and has saved a lot of money. And so I would like to go ahead and start working on those proposals if that is okay with you all.
Manager, who was the insurance carrier at present time?
Blue Risk, Blue Ridge Risk Partners. So you didn't need a motion for that? Yeah, I do need a motion for that. I'll make a motion to authorize you to look for proposals on the insurance coverage.
Seconded that?
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Any questions? All those in favor? All opposed? Thank you, motion is carried. Number 10, update on Virginia Street Sidewalk Project and Consideration of an Access Ramp to the Rail Trail from Virginia Street.
Uh, Dayday and I had a meeting with Rhonda Brizendine and not Adam, but Tim, I think, from the Department of Highways. We asked them to attend this meeting and I haven't gotten a response. I sent another email and asked Rhonda and Adam. So what I can tell you is that we are supposed to have a meeting this month with the Department of Highways and the engineer from Thrasher to walk the project and decide what needs to be done. And that will, I think, that will then close out the design part of the project. And then we will have to apply for funds to finish the actual project, which we should have a pretty good chance because usually if they give you a design money, they'll go ahead and give you the money to finish the project. And it's, I don't, I, I don't look for us to have a meeting this month, just to be honest. I don't think it's gonna happen. So it's probably gonna be the first of the year. Maybe we'll get it in December. I don't know. But Dayday and Josh Sappio looked at an access ramp and I'll let him tell you from, from Virginia Street, like Ms. DeMello had asked for.
So we looked at, across from Duncan Avenue is the easiest lattice spot on the trail. So we met with the state and they didn't have a problem with us. They said that they would put up a sign right there at the crossing, but they won't do anything. They won't put a crosswalk across the road. It's just one of those things. There's not enough traffic. There's enough visibility from each direction that you can see from. So I think it's the easiest place to put it in and the safest place.
So they won't do a, I mean, there's a ton of traffic. They don't have the need for a crosswalk or markings on the road.
Only place the state will put a crosswalk in is at a four-way intersection with stoplights. They will not put it in.
First stop signs.
First stop signs. They won't put it in, 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 we've tried for years on the, if I sat by Pizza Hut, trying to get one there. They won't put one there. So it's just one of those things. Their, their guidelines, they go by.
But people are crossing there all, all the whole.
Right, right. And what, and what this is, is really, it's, it's a handicap for, make it easier for that, for that lady and her, and her daughter. She's still gotta hung down the street some to get there, but it would be a safer spot for her to, to cross the road.
So do y'all have to do the work?
We will. We'll have to frame it and pour it. And then of course, we'll have to take out part of a curb that belongs to the Department of Highways. We'll have to mill a little bit hit down to make a.
But you got their approval to do that?
Yes.
Good. And when can we start?
It's, it's, it's on the list.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, we're, they're laying, they're getting ready to start laying the rock on the sign. The sign is done. The Welcome to Oak Hill sign, they have it. They just gotta finish the rock on the sign and then the company's gonna come and install that. So it's, it's looks nice. It's gonna be nice when they.
Yeah, it will be, it will be nice.
Right.
Well, that's gonna be lit.
There are gonna, yes, there will be lights there.
Wonderful.
Been asking for that for a long time.
The Welcome to Oak Hill sign. Yeah, now if we can just get one on the other, on the end of town. Also, as we work on this with the engineers, with the sidewalk project, we're gonna try to get the holes out of the sidewalk, the bone holes that has the electric and everything on it. That will help more with the accessibility if we can get those backed up or, or do something with those. Do y'all have any questions on that?
What kind of poles you talking about?
The pole, the utility poles that are in there. I think they're all, did you say they're all frontier poles?
Most, most of them are.
They just put them on there. So we have to work with those different people and the state to try to get those moved back a little bit.
Make it nice. For the sidewalk project, getting the side, you know, your ADI clients, getting those holes off, out, out.
How hard do you think that'll be?
Don't think it will be that hard. We just have to have the Department of Highways help and they have to be quick. But it did work in there.
Can your department help with that?
All right, do we have an update on the City Park project?
We do. Tyler has pictures that he took with the drone. That is where the basketball, you can see the area there where the basketball court will go. They are going to pour that tomorrow. So the basketball court will, should be ready soon. You can see there's some dugouts. They're starting on the dugouts. And they are still waiting on something for the concession stand. Is that what he said? Yep.
Okay. Yeah, I'll be brief. As Domenita said.
Yeah, we don't like that word.
That's my line. That's how you gotta start out.
That's how Phil starts out.
So yeah, the concession stand, there was a last-minute revision to the layout of that concession stand. So they had to kind of press pause on that. They were actually moving along really quickly, getting ready to pour the floor. And we had some, we identified a few modifications that needed to be made to that space. But dugouts should be getting their roof packages, I think, starting this week sometime, along with the pour of the basketball court, as Domenita mentioned. Like about any construction project, we've had a few snags, few hiccups, found a few things. They had some really soft dirt under a few of the foundations. So the engineers and the contractor had to work together to identify potential solutions for that and come up with, you know, the changes for that. But as you can see, they did so and we've got a lot of things moving along. So basketball courts should be poured by tomorrow, hopefully. Weather looks nice. So I anticipate they'll do that. And then we'll continue moving along. I think it's, it's moving along at a good pace. We're really happy with the way the project is moving. The contractor's been great to work with. Engineers has, have been great to work with. We're all working together and communication's going well, so.
I have a question. What about the old concession stand that's still sitting there? Is that coming down?
It is not for the purpose of this project. So it's kind of gonna be in limbo there. It's not being torn down. But there has been talks about potentially repurposing it for a variety of things.
Yeah, it's a good shield that's in my backyard. So if you leave it up.
I know that Josh Sappio, Parks and Recreation Director, has thought about doing, using it for like a summertime youth program. He's been talking to some folks and being able to use that kitchen area as a potential, you know, lunch.
It's a nice building.
But nothing's set in stone just yet. A lot of ideas being kicked around.
Good.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, I just said good.
Okay. Can you talk about the surface of the basketball court?
Uh, yes. For this project, the surface of the basketball court is just gonna be a concrete surface and stripes will be painted. Ideally, they make, and we did a lot of research on this before, they make an outdoor court surface that is a lot safer. It's less slick when you have water on it, like if it rains. It allows, it's, it's kind of, it comes in one foot by one foot tiles and it's kind of a plastic rubbery surface that just overlays. You put it together like a puzzle. We looked at a couple of different products when we first started looking at this. That is not included in this, but it would definitely be a good future enhancement as we move along in future years. Things that will probably add to the wish list, so to speak, for, for the park area is to add that court surface. It's actually really neat. They, the company that, well, there's a couple of companies. One of them, they assemble the entire court surface for that in their factory and they'll stripe it in a variety of ways, however you want it. They can put your city logo in the middle of it, which looks really nice. You can choose your color scheme. They can put different court layouts on it off to the side, like pickleball, hopscotch, those different games that you might play on the same surface and as well as the basketball court striping. And it's, you know, it's got a long warranty and it's supposed to be a lot safer. Somebody falls, they're gonna land on that surface and not get, you know, eaten by the concrete. So that's, if that's what you were.
Yep.
Are there any?
Definitely be on the future wishlist.
Are there any plans for those metal bleachers that are still there?
The bleachers are not in this project, but it's something that we certainly identified.
Are those coming up or are they gonna be moved or? They've been asked for. That's why I'm asking you.
They're not, I think.
I think we're, we're.
Yeah.
They're, they're not going, they're gonna stay right there.
Okay, that's fine.
We definitely have identified a need to add some bleachers down there. So that's again, something that we'll be looking at as we move forward with future projects.
Yeah, I was asked about moving them over to the football field. I wasn't sure if we're gonna keep those or not.
We are. They're gonna stay there.
That's fine. All right, thank you.
We need more. We did, we did get the Land Water Conservation Fund grant submitted on time. So we'll just wait to see what we hear about that.
I've got this like crazy idea. And if y'all think it's crazy, tell me, laugh about it, tell me it is. But that, that, one of the things about that park, and Allison may have something on this or working on this already, but that park is gonna be, we're envisioning the way it is, a lot of travel ball people coming in, right? So a lot of people from out of state coming in. That's what, you know, Brad, he's really big on that, saying that it's gonna attract a, a lot every weekend. Basically, I think it's gonna be full with visitors. And I just was thinking about it, this crazy idea, maybe if we could get, I don't, I'm not saying something tacky, no, but maybe team up with Becky or something to, because I, there's people that I feel like may come in here, stay at the motel, stay in Airbnb, get up, go down there, be at there for travel ball day, but not, maybe not necessarily get to make it out to the visitor center or something? Maybe team up with them and have, I don't know, something that's inside the concession stand where they can promote some local stuff to some visitors that come in? The, you know, Needles Eye Park or a. Yeah, something like that, you know, I kind of like the.
And the old concession stand?
No, we're tearing it down. It was just, just something I like to bring up.
Yeah. Well, just a few weekends ago, they had like 10 or 12 softball leagues down there. And I heard all this screaming and, and I mean, they, they played all weekend, Saturday and Sunday. I mean, it was packed, packed, packed. So there's a lot of opportunity there to promote Oak Hill.
All right. Any department reports?
Allison's here.
Allison?
I will be pretty brief. Ladies and gentlemen, I did want to show you something real quick. First off, the last two days of last week, Thursday and Friday, I was at Hawks Nest for a West Virginia Community Development Hub hubcap function. And I thought this was pretty cool. It was just one of the, one of the exercises that we did. And this was a six, various people's chicken scratch on here from the city, or a few peoples, rather. We just took six minutes to basically show, you know, here we are in the middle is Oak Hill, some of the great things that you have going on in the city. And then these little hands going out from these big, great things we have already going on in the city show the support mechanisms that have made those things happen. And, you know, I just thought it was pretty cool as we were doing this, that this consistent theme kept popping up where it was the community saw the want, saw the need, the community started the initiative, and then the city assisted in maintaining it. So I thought that was pretty cool. It just, it just kind of broke it, brought it full circle to see how important it's been throughout the history of Oak Hill and how important it continues to be that our citizens come to us as city government, as municipal government, with their ideas, with their needs. And then we help them see those through to fruition. And then the city's on the back end maintaining those as well. So I just thought that was something pretty neat to see, how we've all worked together in the past and how, how important that's going to be in the future cannot be understated. So, I just thought that was something pretty neat to see, how we've all worked together in the past, and how, how important that's going to be in the future cannot be understated. What we've been doing, or I guess what I've been doing in economic development, I say we, because we've got a lot of partners. The last month, we've really spent focusing on moving the projects that we already had going forward. You know, the last thing we want to do is be good idea fairies and have fifty thousand things going on, and get all of them executed to sixty percent, that's a fail on all fronts. So, what we spent the last month doing has really been focusing on moving the projects that we have forward, including the North Hills Group project, the Collins Property project, also the Oak Hill School property, that's in your notes, there's been quite a bit of forward momentum in those projects, and kudos to us, I think, as the city of Oak Hill, projects like this in the past would have stalled, and they would have taken probably years to complete if they would have gotten to completion, but what we've been able to see is now the city has built this fantastic capacity to stay on top of our partners, and to continue, and to continue to effectively assist them in moving these things forward, so our projects are getting moved up to the front burner with our partner organizations in ways that I don't think they had been in the past. Also, what we're working on is, on our business development side, we've identified the importance of supporting the businesses that we already have within our community, and then we all want to build more business, right, we talk about that all the time. Well, if it was just that simple, then that's something that we wouldn't be talking about, meeting after meeting, year after year in the city, so what we've done is taken the time to build up our infrastructure around supporting businesses, when it comes to what kind of businesses we have coming into the area. One thing that we know for sure is we don't want extractive, right, we don't want few low-paying jobs for, you know, in a place that generates income, and then that income goes out of state, that doesn't help our residents, and that doesn't help the future of our city. So, what we focused on is a data-driven approach to the businesses that we want to invite to, to host within our city. And we want to make sure, by the data, by the numbers, that we can actually support and sustain these businesses. You know, the last thing we want to do is have one of the residents of our town invest thirty thousand dollars or their life savings in a business only that, to know that it was doomed to begin with, and six months down the road, they're left with nothing, and we have another vacant building. So, we were doing, I feel a great job of making sure that we've got our infrastructure, West Virginia Hive, the SBDC, various partners, the Business Owners Association, are ready to go to support the businesses that we feel confident that we, that we're gonna be able to, to maintain and support in the city. We did have great news from the Hubcap survey, we had one thousand sixty-nine people completed that survey. And that was fantastic, so that was over a two-week period, the Build the Hill survey, that was geared entirely towards business development within the city of Oak Hill, primarily focusing on the retail sector. I would imagine there's a decent number of people in this room that took that survey, and we are very grateful, because we're gonna be able to take those numbers and back that up with the hard data from the city to make a really effective plan moving forward in continuing to incubate business in the city, so thank you guys.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have my MS four report, and it's about dumpsters today. So, always make sure, if you're, especially if you're a business, to pick up litter and debris and sweep sediments and chemical spills immediately. Keep debris away from storm drains, keep dumpsters and waste bins covered. Never wash down dumpsters with a hose, if cleaning is needed, contact the dumpster leasing company. Check your dumpsters regularly for leaks and replace if necessary, and schedule regular waste pickups. Also, storm, the storm drains that we have lead to ponds and rivers, and every time it rains, then the pollutants that are left on the street are dumped in the drain impact the water that goes into our rivers, and that we rely on for drinking and swimming and fishing and boating, and all the things that we like to do. And some of those common pollutants include washwater, detergents, grass clippings, dog poop, fertilizers, gasoline, litter, motor oil, paints, pesticides, road salt and sand, solvents, and yard waste, so Day Day found someone today putting the leaves in, putting his leaves in our creek. So, that, that's something that we don't like. Also, the Beautification Committee is scheduling a a litter sweep after the parade, after the Christmas parade on December ninth. And we are gonna try to pick up all the, the candy that gets left by, that let, gets left behind on the streets because that goes right to our drains and on down into the new river. So, if anyone wants to join us with that, we would appreciate it. And also, we're gonna try with the participants of the parade to ask, maybe that they package their candy a little differently, if they could put it in some bundles, if they could not throw it so hard, or just try to reach out to the children, or, you know, and if it's maybe if it's bundled, two or three pieces, or put in a cloth bag or something, and just, that way you can distribute the candy easier. Go ahead.
All right, I'm sure you just made Chairman of the Beautification Committee very happy.
Yeah.
All right, can we get a motion to accept all the department head reports? Anyone?
I move to accept the department reports.
Can we get a second?
I'll second.
Motions are properly moved to accept the department reports, all those in favor? All those opposed?
I did see, I was gonna say, I did see that this time, for the, the first time I've seen one, there was a zoning report in the council packet, and that, that was nice, it was real nice to, to see all that, and I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Any other council comments?
I have a comment. What, what did we decide to do about the date for, we're supposed to get back with her?
I'll send out the proposed ordinance, and it'll be on the agenda for next month.
Just a small one?
Yes, double here. What have we decided to do with the parks in Mendon?
We have not decided anything. We're still, we have, we're still waiting on, if we, if we keep it at where Percy's park is, if we concentrate on that area, then we need that group, that community group to give us the land. And so, ACE will not sign until we can pretty much guarantee that we're gonna put a park there. And Berwin Land is still going through the process, is that, that's what he told you? They're still getting permission from their people.
It's taking a long time.
Yeah, I mean, we've, it's been back almost a year probably that we've started working on this with ACE and Berwin. And now Percy has, is supposed to speak with that group that he has.
Because we do have money set aside for the parks.
No, we don't. I know Mr. Hazlett said that we had ten thousand dollars, but I guess that got lost in a budget somewhere from year from year to year. We do have some money for parks in ARPA, in the ARPA that's left.
Okay.
I mean, we have some ARPA money left that could be directed to parks.
Okay. How much money did we get from ARPA that funded, how much was it?
We, it was three point four million, I think. I can't remember exactly, I'd have to go back and look.
So, what projects have we used that money for?
Well, we have some set aside for this park project, we've been using it for drainage projects. We used it for some police equipment, and they're a new computer system. But mostly drainage, Needles Eye, we used some for Needles Eye. It's been mostly parks, I mean, parks and drainage is, as council suggested from the beginning.
Do we have any future plans for the ballots?
Not yet, we, it's just been the parks. I would like to do a sidewalk project.
Only for specific things.
Well, that's what you all had said, that you wanted to do drainage and sidewalks and parks, that, I mean, that's what the council had said before.
Okay, but you mentioned computer systems.
Well, that was when we first were awarded the money before anyone, and when we thought it could only be used for police department, and at first, they had a real limited list, so we, the police department needed new, a, a whole new court system, basically, so we paid for that out of ARPA funds.
Is there a deadline for spending that money?
Uh, not since we have taken out all this revenue reimbursement.
Have we come up with a date for the budget workshop yet?
I was gonna ask you all, we don't need, we no longer need to have a meeting on November twenty-seventh because the sanitary board, when we were in a call about that project, it was decided we didn't need to close, we didn't need to issue the bonds for five hundred thousand that we were going to. So, that was gonna be on November twenty-seventh, and so I wanted to see if you all wanted to do that on November twenty-seventh. Have a, just have a budget training, and maybe some iPad, if you have anything with that. So, that would be up to you all. And so, in that, I mean, what I was gonna do was just go over those reports that you get. We weren't really gonna discuss the actual budget. I mean, that was my plan for the workshop.
With, the workshops are usually in, what, the first one in February?
Right, but I had planned, I had a little bit of interest in just knowing what all the reports, you know, the reports that Valerie gives, I was just gonna go over and explain how we came up with the, how, the numbers, what each one represented.
In the digital signage? That
I, that has, that has, I have not done anything on that until I had, I've started on that three times, and something's happened every time, so I have not done that, because some people, I guess we have to decide on if we real, if we want it out here, or if we want it, I mean, I don't think, I don't know that there's a need to have it at the bank, but that's and that is probably up to about forty thousand now.
Any other council comments?
I have a couple more.
Okay.
Please.
All right.
It bothers me that we do not advertise jobs in the city.
Well, we haven't had any recently.
But how about?
I mean, we did advertise the ones that we've had the past, we advertised the Economic Development Director, we advertised the zoning position, there hasn't been we advertised the last sanitary board employee that we hired.
How about the office workers?
We haven't hired any office workers recently.
Last year, before last?
Well, when we hired, we advertised all of those, we, because we interviewed, gosh, Valerie, how many did we do? There was a bunch that we interviewed.
In the tourist parking area, I think we're gonna do with that.
Well, there was, when we went out there looking at that, the owner of the property, Donnie Snyder, owner of the other property, said that he owned up into the middle of the lot, and he didn't want us working on that, or that he owned up into, through the middle of the road there, and that he didn't want us bothering with it, and I didn't think it was worth the fight, because the, we were only doing that for Truist Bank anyway, which I don't know why we would provide them with parking. But they are all parking in Donnie's, on his property.
Are they paying to park there?
I, I don't know if they're paying him or not, they may Yeah. I mean, I imagine that they are.
In the Veterans Memorial? Where are we with that?
That committee has not gotten together.
Uh, I also submitted two names for the Spirit of Oak Hill award.
And that committee has not, also has not met.
Would that be on the next month's?
I can put it on the next month's agenda, yes, and get the committee, I'll have to, I think Sandy's on that committee.
Okay, since Rhonda resigned, that salary goes where? What do we?
It'll just be absorbed into our budget.
Okay, will there be additional pay for treasure slash?
I had not planned on that. She didn't ask. I think she's, is, she's, I mean, she has said before that she was happy with her salary, it was she started out doing that, so we didn't cut her pay when she no longer had to do it.
Uh, also, when we, we met as a council workshop, I should say, uh, the comprehensive plan. Somebody mentioned a comprehensive.
It's time for a comprehensive plan. Allison's been working some on that, I think we can get some assistance from the West Virginia Law Clinic to help us.
The addition to the fire department. Did we have to buy or purchase those blueprints?
Yes, we did. That came from fire lab money.
Purchase what? The blueprints?
They, the engineer design, yes.
That's all I have.
Hey, I got a question.
Yes.
Instead of, if, Demita's wanting to go forward with that meeting, I have a commitment I can't get out of on that Monday, the twenty-seventh. Can we move it to Tuesday, the twenty-eighth, does anyone have a problem with that, November the twenty-eighth? That's fine. Roger. On a Tuesday. Does that just pop up that I have a commitment that I can't get out of? Be at the same place.
And we'll do that at six o'clock.
Okay, November twenty-eighth, Tuesday, thank you.
Mayor, I've got a couple of comments.
Yes, sir.
But if no one else, okay. It, I, I got some information that after last council's meeting, that I want to share with this council and the citizens of Oak Hill, that I wish I would have known it at the last council meeting, but that's how it goes, but as you remember during the last, the last meeting where we denied Mr. John David's request for the ten thousand for the roof repairs for the old Oak Hill school. I think that maybe some of the council were led to believe in that meeting that without that money from the city, the repairs couldn't be made, and the future of that building would be uncertain, and, and I think it may have caused some of the council to feel bad, you know, which may have persuaded or thought of how they voted, and Mayor, you had to break a tie vote for the first time. So in the days following that meeting, I was made aware of a few things that I really want to bring to everyone's attention. You may know it already because those things were not revealed to us at that time. However, they could have been. But from a newsletter that was dated on September 20th, 2023, announcing rural development investments, it stated that the Southern Appalachian Labor School Foundation Incorporated received a $79,200 Community Facilities Grant. The rural development investment will be used for roof repair of their two community center facilities. One is the Oak Hill School and the other is the Beards Fork School. Another is a USDA grant that was just announced for $24,720 for Southern Appalachian Labor School. And that grant said this funding will assist the repairing the roofs of the two community center facilities. Council, this totals $103,930 that they have received in funding for roof repair in just the past couple of months that I, that I've been made aware of. Also, in addition to the grants for roof repair, Sal's recently received another very substantial grant, and this is taken from an article from the September 1st, 2023 issue of the Fayette Tribune. According to the press release from Joe Manchin's office of Congressional earmarks from the Senate Appropriations Committee. Here, this is an excerpt taken out of it. It says, included among the funding announced earlier this month was for New River Apartments at the Southern Appalachian Labor Schools Historic Oak Hill School. Then it goes, according to Dr. John David, the Sal's volunteer director, the funds are targeted. It says targeted to renovate the third floor of the former school, which is on the National Register of Historic Places into low-income apartments as well as an elevator. That is, I just want to make y'all aware because that is a little over a million dollars in the past couple of months that they are receiving in government handouts mostly, and it's mostly for the Oak Hill School. That's a lot of money that we weren't told about when he was trying to get 10,000 from us. So I just wanted y'all to know that and just say, don't let anyone guilt trip you for not giving that 10,000 he requested. And we, as a council, need to be very cautious for any future requests we get from anyone for that matter, not just him, but but anyone for that matter. I think we need to be a little bit more stringent on where it's going, the restrictions and all that from it. And that, that, that's all I have about that.
I appreciate that information because I felt I was the one that felt led to give him that money because I have so many customers that use his facility. And I thought that would hurt them. That's where my heart was. I had no idea all that money had been awarded to them. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments?
When, when we're looking at the Virginia Street Sidewalk Project and Day Day talked about the access ramp to the rail trail and, and I think I think Day Day's working on selling the salvage rails on the, next to the rail trail parallel to Virginia Street. Can, can we look at coordinating with the state of West Virginia about removing the rails under the pavement on Jones Avenue that creates a rough area of pavement and has forever?
Yeah, they pave over them and it breaks.
Yeah, it breaks up. It's not going to hold. That's all I have, Mayor. And I, I know that's a DOH street that's, but, you know, and I know in the, in, in years past, we've always said we'll cooperate, we'll we'll help, we'll do anything we can to get that out from under the state road.
Anyone else? Any other future agenda items? All right, I'm going to make an announcement. Yes, Mr. Small?
Mr. Bragg mentioned striping the basketball court. When they finish that, could they do the one out at Russell Matthew Park? With that?
We won't go do it on the same contract, but because they're already contracted, we've already signed a contract with the government. However, they get something, maybe we can find out who does it. Maybe put that in there.
Thank you.
Veritas is our contractor on this park project and they have been great to work with and very helpful.
So if they sub that out to like a local person or, maybe not local, then we can talk to them and say, hey, would you?
And they may very well sub it out or they did it themselves and we can certainly ask about how much if they could go over on separate purchases.
I do have one thing that maybe can be on the agenda or maybe not, maybe it does have to be, but we have heard, it's back to the Menden Parks, that some of the, some of the people in Menden have requested that we do a survey to see if they want a park in Menden because some of the people have told us that they don't. So I, I don't know what you all think about that. Do you want to?
Can we, can we direct, if we do that, can we direct that just to them? Is there a way that we can direct that just to them?
We can.
So that everybody else in Oak Hill doesn't have their opinion?
It would, we'd have to do it with the mail, but we can get that from our sewer system.
Is that outside Percy's Park? That's not including Percy's Park, is it?
Well, they've just said that maybe they don't want, you know, maybe they would rather us spend that money on something else in Menden than sure, well, yeah.
Go ahead, Mr. Fruit, go ahead.
It, it's my personal opinion, Mr. Fruit, that I think that if we're going to look at the parks, I mean, we're having the issue with ACE and all that. I think it, if we're going to go this route and continue with it, I think we need to focus on Percy's and, and not the other one. Put all of our resources and money toward that one. If that's the one that we're going, it's the most logical economical place to do. So if we're going to do a survey like he's requesting, I would suggest that it would be for that, that part.
Have you talked to your group about deeding that land to us? Well, we can't do anything if we don't own the land.
Who's the property belong to?
They have a community. Don't you have some kind of organization or something? Right, so we're we're working with three different entities on that piece of property. So that's, I mean, that
But we can do like what Chris is stating, that we can just limit the, the request or survey to strictly to the Menden area.
Yes, we can. Okay, so maybe I will work on that and then I'll present it at the next meeting.
Thank you all for coming out. If all minds are clear, we will consider this meeting adjourned. You all have a good night.